It's a work session tonight, so you guys don't have to vote on anything. Once I get the edits, I'll bring the final back to you for a vote during a regular meeting. So we're just working through stuff tonight.
Sounds good. Okay, this special meeting, Livingston City Commission regarding strategic plan is now open. Do I need to call roll?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Friedman.
Present.
Commissioner Maybe.
Present.
Commissioner News. Commissioner News.
That's her lips move.
Is she? And Sherwood one is absent.
All right. Yes, Michael, you want to give a given overview of exactly what we're doing here? Shoot, I'm losing my.
You're on mute, Michael.
And that will probably help. It's a strategic plan work session is what we've noticed for this evening. So it will be just going over the strategic plan. We don't have any votes this evening, but we will. I will take down all the edits and then what will happen is I will bring the final copy into once we get it into a scheduled agenda meeting and then you guys can vote to finalize it. I was mentioning earlier, this isn't the last time or the only time we can look at this. If we don't get to where we want to tonight, we can certainly have another work session in October, November, December. Really, the only constraint is to have it finalized by the beginning of next year so that we can use it in the budget process. Other than that, we did go through about three quarters of the plan, I think, originally in the last work sessions before COVID kind of sidelined us. The the draft you have tonight, there's some additions and some deletions that the staff is recommending. I think we highlighted those in yellow. And other than that, staff went through it. We didn't find any huge things that needed to be changed. But everything else should be updated, so you can see the current status. So it really depends if you want to start from the beginning and review everything. Or I think we got up to safe and healthy community was where would have been the next item if you just want to start there.
That would be page 14. Was where we left off. Commissioners, any thoughts on where you want to start? I'm inclined to start where we left off. Looking at my notes that I finally found.
That would also be my preference, Quentin, to start.
Okay, sounds good.
I will let you know, the only recommendation change the staff made that's prior to that is 2.1.3, and it basically was the reserve for the library fund. And we basically said the library fund is up to the library board and the library director. So that's probably not something we should have in our strategic plan because we don't control it.
I agree. I saw that highlighted in yellow somewhere. Right. Right, Michael, yeah, let's go ahead and start with section five, safe and healthy community.
Okay, so I will just review what's in there currently, and then you can have discussion about it. Our main strategies, the first one is enhance first responder capability. Part of that was maintain ambulance funding. Funding, the mill levy is complete, so that's done. Fund the Missouri River Drug Force Drug Task Force Officer. We are not in a place to do that right now, but we still are contributing to the county's Task Force Officer and then develop a plan to create a drug court. So that was a county led effort, and I think they did complete that. So that actually is complete, so I can update that shortly and show you that that is done. The next strategy is educate and connect the community. One of the actions was to create an ACEs or an adverse childhood experiences training program that is complete. We have a childhood advocacy center. We've not made much progress on that one, but that's a 2021 goal, a resource webpage for the city. If you have not checked that out, I highly recommend it. There's a lot of information on that page. I think it's a great connection for people if they can get to it. So that is complete. Community resilient strategic plan, that one's pushed out for a ways yet. There's going to be some significant resources that have to be put towards that. So that's 5.2. 5.3 is support external agencies and providing services locally. So these will be continual or reoccurring items. The first one is to continue to fund Wind Rider that has been done at 5,000 annually. That's been done for FY20 and FY21. So I can actually update that to say that's done for FY21 as well. Go to the next page, please. Nope, you're good. Expand the early childhood coordinator hours. Well, that was done in FY20. That position was lost in FY21 because the grant funding that went along with it was lost. There is currently a part-time position. It's not nearly as robust as it was before. We're looking at different ways to return some of those services that were lost due to the loss of grant funding. Design the wellness center. That's mostly done. You'll be seeing that come up in some future agendas. We're waiting right now for a feasibility study on basically philanthropy that will be coming up shortly. We have analyzed funding for the HRC's warming center. I just added that in there. That wasn't something you guys have voted on, so I just wanted to note that they are coming next in our next agenda to give a scheduled public comment on their feasibility study. Continue to fund the spay and neuter clinic. That's been done for FY21, so we can continue to add those as well as MSU Economic Development Agency. That is also done for FY21, so I can update that as well. Goal 5.4 is enhance multimodal connectivity and transportation. We're still looking at the active transportation plan, the active transportation coalition, I think, is starting to get back up and running. They took a little time off. I think they had some turnover in staff. So we'll probably have the actual transportation plan before we look at developing multimodal design standards. We did complete the O Street Trail Connector, which was great. We have installed for 5.4, creating electrical vehicle infrastructure. We have the chargers installed on Clark Street. We're evaluating where next we would put electrical charging stations, or at least the infrastructure for them, if we don't actually put in the charging stations themselves. And then Safe Route to Schools will be another program that will come along with the Active Transportation Coalition. Connect West Side Development, so we're continuing to look at ways that we can connect West Side Developments better for active transportation into the core of the city. There's a few items that we're looking at. Most of them are going to require a significant amount of funding, so that's going to be the issue with those. And then the 88 transition complaint plan is complete, and that is an annual process that we go through now with with the community to see what we fund next. So we have a plan, but then we engage the community to see if those are the items that they think should be funded next. So that's an ongoing thing, but the actual plan itself is complete. And then the last thing in section five is 5.5, preserve, integrate and improve our natural spaces. So one of them is pursue dedicated funding. We're still looking at that. That's somewhat tied into the wellness center, but we could do that separately. Maintain the parks, trails, systems and trees. We did do a pretty major repair on the trail from basically Rogers Lane by Matt's meets there all the way up to Highway 10, the trailer runs there. So that was, we filled in, there's a lot of asphalt, pothole patching, and then we chip sealed those repairs, so those should be pretty resilient for quite a while. And then create a policy for new parks versus cash in lieu of, that's one of the things we're looking at. We did some early work on defining the cash in lieu of process, but not on what our actual policy is for what we want as a city. So that's still out there. And then the final item on there was creation of conservation board, which is already complete. So the current status of section five.
All right, any commissioner comments on section five?
Got a question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I'm looking at the last draft from March 5th, and maybe it's updated since then. There it was in red, Michael, it was. So there used to be a 5.5.4 that wasn't conservation board. Conservation Board used to be under a different like 5.6. And there was something for specific, create specific funding and management goals for street trees. Did that just get wrapped into 5.5.2? It was in red, so.
Yes, so that one got got wrapped into 5.5.2. We do have some dedicated funding for trees. There's actually a tree contribution fund in the in the general fund where people contribute money specifically for trees. It goes into a restricted cash fund where that's kept specifically for trees. I think the current current balance of that's around $350 some dollars. So it's probably as good a point of any, just to to give you some information on that. There there are several restricted cash funds that don't show up in the budget book because we don't budget them. They're just amounts of money that are there for certain restricted uses. One is for Sacagawea Park itself. I think there's a little over $300 in that specific line in that cash restricted account. There's one for repair and maintenance of the Sacagawea statue. That one's a little over $30,000. So there's there's about $33,000, I think, set aside for repair maintenance of the Sacagawea statue that is restricted for that use. There's the tree fund, which we talked about, and then there's just a general. It used to be part of and probably still is technically part of the skill and trust fund. I think there's about $17,000 in that for basically community wide projects that benefit the entire community. So a lot of times that has gone into parks, parks, projects or overall projects. So that's a very long answer to say yes, that got rolled into 5.2 point or 5.5.2.
Right, any other additional commissioner comments before I open it up to the public?
When do you want like our feedback now, or do you want to? Do you want the public to go first? Like in terms of any changes or whatever additions?
Maybe we should open her to the public first. And I'm trying to like we have one email comment. I'm trying to work that in here from Jennifer Magic. Rewriting the code and stuff that's ongoing. And downtown master plan and gross policy implement implementation, which will happen once it's done. Yeah, let's open it up for a public comment on this section. And actually, this is the last section of the strategic plan besides our annual plan. Now going month by month. Yeah, let's open her up to a public comment on section five. And Michael, you and faith control list. Since I don't know who's waiting or what.
Sure. If you want to do a public comment, just go ahead and send a chat in, or it looks like Sarah's raising her hand. So Sarah, go ahead.
Thanks, guys. I do have, I've got, I've got a couple comments, so I don't know if you want, or mostly questions. So I'm working with PCC on the active transportation stuff, and I'm coming in a little bit after the initial elements were put down into the strategic plan. So forgive me if I'm if I might be asking for clarity where it's where it might be obvious. I'm just not picking that up. So I just kind of want to want to know like how those. Well, first of all, I think in what you said, Michael, is that everything's kind of ripe, wrapped up into 5.5.2 with trees, parks and trails. So maybe a suggestion would be to separate those three different elements because there is so much that's going on in those, and I assume just the different work that's going on there. And then I just had a clarity question on how the active transportation elements speak to each other, especially when we're dealing with a downtown master plans coming up and then, you know, the growth policy draft, and then we have a safe routes to schools. So for instance, if safer to schools is one of the main priorities in this kind of combined effort, you know, how do we, you know, making making these recommendations, getting kids to and from and protecting, improving public health and safety. And then how does that all fit into the other plans? And what was the reasoning for having some in 2022 and some in 2023, like the multimodal design standards? So I didn't know if there was a conversation that I was just not privy to, but that would make sense. And then, I mean, really, it's to get an understanding on how the active transportation coalition fits into that and where where we can recommend how all these pieces fit together and where we're best involved. So that's the second one. And then the third one was just a short one on connecting West Side Developments. I assume that's just a separated bike path, or is there any clarity on what that looks like? Does it correspond with the railroad crossing, et cetera? So I think that's it right now. I'll close off. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Michael, you want to address that?
Sure, we'll see if I get these in order correctly. So the different timelines on the different items are basically estimates. I mean, that's, that's pretty scientific, I know, but that's really what they are. When we looked at the entire strategic plan, we looked at what capacity we had to get things done and what timeframe, and we tried to estimate when we could get to certain items based on the staff availability, outside availability, sometimes money, whatever it came down to. And those are goals. We don't restrict ourselves by those, i.e. if there's something that comes up that's scheduled for a later date, but for some reason the stars align and we can get it done earlier, we will. So that's one of the best parts about the strategic plan is it tells us what we want to do. So if there's an opportunity to get one of those things done, we can just take it and do it. So they're not restrictive, but they are what we what we envision it going, the order we envision it going in. So we would envision creating a safe route to schools and an active transportation plan before we created the multimodal designs. So we have a better idea of kind of how we're doing active transportation in the city. And then once we kind of understand that better, then we would set the design standards to support that. So that would be the reasoning behind why it's in that order. If for some reason it worked out that it was easier to do the design standards first, there's no restriction on that, we could do that first. Just depends on where this was our shot at trying to at least give a outline for where we were going to put our efforts first and where we were going to put our efforts later on. So that's really the the order. That's how that came to be. As far as how these all speak together, these are all goals. So the strategic plan is is really a high level document. It is not going to tell us how this goal attaches to this goal. That's up to us in the execution portion of it. And so when we're doing it, we have to look at it holistically to see what all the goals are. And when we're accomplishing one goal, we need to make sure that it's aligning with the other goals that are in the document. Sometimes the goals are, they compete with each other, and then we have to balance between them and say, okay, what's the balance between getting this done and maintaining the reserve and the fund that we've we said we want? So those are, that's an example of where it could compete. So it's really up to the people that are executing that goal, whether that's city staff, whether that's an advisory board, whether that's a nonprofit in the city or just citizen participation. We try to bring all those things up so people can see the bigger picture and then try and do them at least in a supporting manner, if not necessarily a linked manner, so that we're certainly not at cross purposes when we build. You know, if we, if we build an active transportation plan that doesn't fit in with our new downtown plan, then that's probably not a great use of resources. Sometimes it's hard because one's one's ready to get done and the other one's not done yet, and we're not sure how much it's going to drive the other one. And so we try to be flexible in it, but we, it takes a lot of coordination to make pull those things off. So if you're doing something and you see that we're not pulling something in, absolutely say, hey, how does this affect this item? Have you thought about that? And we'll, we'll tell you either yes, we've thought about it, and this is what we think, or we'll say, nope, I haven't really looked at that, so we probably should. So it takes, it takes a lot of people, hopefully, that have read the entire plan and at least have a basic understanding of where the city's trying to go and then pulling that together. And that's really, you know, the staff's going to be the forefront of that, of trying to make sure we understand all the different pieces and bringing those to any groups or boards that are working on things. So that is how they kind of integrate. So that was the order, the integration. And then as far as how ATC can be involved in those things or any group really, so this isn't specific to ATC. The goals, as far as the strategic plan goes, it's not going to limit that, and it's not going to show that. That's really going to be each process. In this case, I know Eric and I sit down occasionally. She comes in, we talk through issues and Sarah, you've been into, and that's really, that's really the linking point is as we go through these things, coming in, sitting down and figuring out where we are in the process, what the city can do to move it along, you know, what, in this case, where ATC is and where they can move it along. And that's where I'll make requests of you guys, like when I asked you to analyze where the pedestrian activated crossings would be, right? So that's a place where I'm asking you to bring into the process some information that I think you guys have that the city doesn't have. You know, where you have a better idea of what would work best more than us, because while I like my bicycle, I probably don't ride it as much as you guys. And so you're going to have a much better idea of where that will work. And then we'll have to bring that into the overall plan, right? So if we're going to put a crossing here, does that make sense in the overall active transportation plan? So there's a lot of moving pieces, and we'll try and draw you in as much as possible. And if there's something you think that you know that we're missing, just, you know, shoot me an email, give me a call, drop in and say, hey, you're really off base on this one, and then we'll reevaluate where we're at. Does that make sense as I answer your questions?
It does. And then just the other two things about the the connection to the West Side Development. And then is it possible to to uncouple the trees maintenance, park and trails maintenance?
So yeah, so two quick, those are easy ones. Thanks for easy questions. The West Side connectivity is not necessarily connected to anything specific, and that's why we try to word those goals pretty broadly and pretty vaguely, because we don't want it tied, especially the strategies, we don't want tied to any specific project. And then as far as the actions go, we try to, if we don't have a specific project in mind, to make it fairly broad as well, so that if there's a better idea or a different way to do it, and we come across it, we can execute that based on the intent of the commission not being, you know, boxed into a certain specific solution. So I think there's several solutions that would help with West Side connectivity, and it might be more than one project, whether that's a separated bike path on the along Highway 10, actually on this, on the south side of the railroad tracks that would tie into some developments that would be developed, maybe a PFL or in the Justin property out there. If that's a different crossing than Fifth Street, because that's really not a great crossing for either pedestrians or bicycles, and it's hard to maintain because we have no control over it. You know, if there's a different solution for that, then that would also help West Side connectivity. So no, it's not tied to any specific project. It's certainly not tied to a crossing. And there's, I think, a lot of things that we could look at to improve it, some small and easy, and hopefully that we can do sooner, and some they're going to be bigger and more expensive and are going to take more time to figure out how to fund and how to get the community behind it and support. So there'll be some education to that as well. And then as far as the what was the other? Just lost it. It's trees, decoupling the things. That's easily done. Although I would probably leave that item as it is, but if there's a specific item, and this is where it gets a little tricky in the strategic plan. If it's not really a capital project, or if it's not going to cost a significant amount of money, it probably doesn't need to go in the strategic plan. We know what our intent is in the street, in the strategic plan. So if it's a smaller project, we can just do it. I mean, examples would be, you know, putting new signs up at the dog park and Moja Dog Park or repairing playground equipment or even putting in new playground equipment. Those are all things we'll do under that maintenance aspect, and that kind of covers the trees too. Unless there's a large project that we want to get to, you know, currently the tree board's working on their their ordinances as far as some of the the city ordinance goes related to trees. And that can be lumped in under there. But if there's a big project that's specific, then absolutely we can add it as a new project under here, a new action under that strategy. So it just depends, do we think it rises to the level of being strategic? And is it something that we want to call out specifically and track? So, but, but yes, we can certainly decouple it. It just depends on the project and how we want to look at it.
Thank you.
Anything additional, Sarah?
No, not for me.
Kind of covers it for right now.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Jonathan Hedinger, 519 West Park Street. I just wanted to say on 5.1 enhanced first responder capability. It says find Missouri River Drug Task Force Officer. I think it might be worth, I think the communities kind of showed that they would like some sort of crisis intervention officer or meant or or some sort of person that could respond to mental health issues. And so it might be, I just would like to see something like a pursue funding for that type of position in the strategic plan. And then yeah, the 5.5 preserve, integrate and improve our natural spaces. I know we're talking about, or one of the things on the other page of topics to consider for strategic plan updates is native landscaping, I think, that just and preserve the night sky. I'm a member of the conservation board, and we're working on the dark sky ordinance, so that could be added. And also, just, I think, Marshall Swearingen from the tree board came a few months ago and presented on the Emerald Ash Borer issue. It might be worth putting increasing native landscaping or something like that under 5.5 in order to help address that issue of the Emerald Ash Borer with native landscaping. So those are just two of the comments that I wanted to have. So thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
And you too, Jonathan.
I mean, Jonathan. Any other public comment? Okay, let's go back to the commissioner comments now. I have a few things to say, but I'll wait till the end on this section. Any commissioner comments, Mr. Maybe?
Thank you. Overall, is there any aspect of the plan that would be radically impacted by the COVID situation? Thank you.
Michael?
Possibly, but probably only in a positive way. There, there are a lot of things on here, or at least items or intents on here that were going to be really hard to fund. So one of the things that the staff is working on right now is a list of items that could be funded that are in line with the strategic plan and things that we could do that probably this is the only year that we could do them without having to go for a mill levy or other other items. So that would be the most, I think, impactful thing would be we have an opportunity to do some things that we usually wouldn't. Now, we have to be careful with what that is because it's one time fund, so it has to be one time expenses, meaning there can't be a huge maintenance cost that's associated with it, or it has to have something that already has a maintenance cost that can be used. Like if you're going to replace something, there was already maintenance on the old thing, the new thing would already have maintenance. But those are, those would be the things I think that would be heavily affected is we can go. is we can go through and look at, once we know a little bit more about the CARES Act funding and are a little more confident that the funds are coming in that we expect, we can look at the strategic plan and see which things on here would be able to be funded that way and would fit into the category of one-time funds.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Mr. Friedman, any thoughts on section 5.5, section five? Commissioner, do you see, you're frantically going through papers.
Well, I'm not frantic. I, well, I guess specific to this section, I like the additions of, that were put under the support to external agencies. I like to see that that's in here now. Because I don't think that was before the 5.3.4, 5.3.45 and 5.3.6. And then can I share generally, some general feedback? Quentin? Okay. So I guess I'd like to see the things that we discussed since the pandemic, like the different CARES Act topics end up in this plan. The things that we've already decided on and voted on, like the housing action plan, clean air shelters, air monitoring station, the warming center already made it, plus the mental health professional. I think those obviously don't all go in five, the fifth section, but wherever it makes sense for them to go. And then the other thing I wonder if it wouldn't be a good thing to include is some of the board topics that were brought up to us. Because we don't really have a way that we're tracking that right now. The things that have been brought to us and put on our radar that we can put those, because some of that's like, some of that's going to end up being commissioned, voted on. And some of it's more just the executive side. I'm thinking of things that, they're probably obvious, but I still think it's important enough to put them in, like implementing the growth policy, the downtown master plan. I think that was something that came up since the last time we reviewed. I think there was a grant that was secured. The Emerald Ash Borer, that, I think that that's been, since I've been a commissioner, I think that's been brought to us twice by Marshall and Mike, I think. And then parks and trails funding was another thing that we voted on. And we keep talking about the parks and trails priorities and making sure that lines up with what the city's working on. So I mean, it's all stuff we've talked about over and over again. I think it might be nice to make it into the strategic plan. So those are like just the list of topics. I do want to say one thing that I like that we've done this year that I think that we should consider doing again is talking about the strategic plan more than once a year. I like the review that we got on this, and in a time that makes sense with the budget and the amount of work that the city staff are doing. But I like the update that we had in the spring and the initial conversation. And then I like the idea of us finalizing it in plenty of time for the city staff before they start the next budget cycle. Like not too far away from when it starts, but far enough that they have time to, you know, it has time to get dispersed and read, like not the day before they start their budget meetings. But I just think that that's a good thing and that we might consider working that into our yearly calendar. Because it seems like it makes sense and it gives the boards time to be involved a couple of times a year. That's all. Thank you.
Any thoughts, Michael?
I can certainly add those things into the strategic plan. I'm not sure all of them are strategic. Some will probably be short-term rather than long-term. And that's fine. It just depends on what you want in there. And we can talk about it as many times as you want during the year. We could have it quarterly, really. And I do update it monthly. So if you want to review it monthly, it certainly is reviewable that often. I think it's great to look at, the more we look at it, the better. Because it is the, the easiest thing for me to go to when I'm trying to make decisions. Because I know that that has been agreed upon by the entire commission. It's something that we, we want long-term. And so it's easier for me to rack and stack decisions when I know the long-term intent of the entire commission. It's just an easy product for me to use in those kinds of situations where we have to make a quick decision. Or if it's something I don't have time to bring in front of the commission, I already know your intent and can try to execute that.
Thank you, Michael. I'd want to bring up one thing. I'm not sure if we have talked about this before, but bringing in the active transportation coalition into a, turning that into a city board, if it would make any sense to be able to coordinate better, faster and more efficiently. And if anybody has any thoughts on that, Sarah, specifically, if you have any thoughts on that. Or are you happy with the way things are going? I'm just throwing this out there. Maybe to hold it a little more accountable.
Should I comment? I think we discussed this when we were still meeting in person. And I think being a member, if I can speak from this position, being a member on the committee of the Parks and Trails Committee and other members that are interested in active transportation, you'll dissolve some of the efforts in parks and trails. Having experience both within an organization like PCC as well as a committee or a board, I find it's actually hard to do really proactive work within the committees because you're limited to the rules of democracy and transparency. And then limited to those, you know, once a month meeting. And you're tied to the other people that are in that group. So for me, it would be a point of frustration personally, but I can't speak on behalf of how it would work best for the city as an advisory. I do hope that I can fill that space and support that platform of accountability if you're willing to work with, you know, with me and, and with that. However that looks, whether I'm just a coordinator or whatever. So those are just my, my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Sarah. That's exactly what I was looking for, exactly. I know we've had this discussion before. I just need my, you know, be refreshed. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go, go ahead, Melissa.
I was just thinking, Quentin, we have this standard on the boards where members can only be on one board at a time. And I think that the Active Transportation Coalition would probably attract people on our city boards from multiple boards and also people from the county. And so I wouldn't want to cut, I certainly wouldn't want to cut people from the county out of an active transportation coalition that would not be able to participate otherwise because they're not within city limits. You know what I'm saying? If it was a board, the county folks wouldn't be, and I want that partnership for active transportation to extend beyond the boundaries of living spend so that people can really, whatever the future is, that they can utilize it outside the city and be brought into town or city center. So that's what's on my mind. And I'm not worried so much about transparency and democracy. I feel like that board would be transparent and willing to share whatever they're working on. And it seems to me like they open it up to everyone. Like I don't, I don't see them as like a board that's trying to control the dialogue and keep people out. It seems like they're always trying to get people to show up to meetings as far as I can tell. So I'm more like worried about limiting the amount of people that can participate. I think the being a state board would do that.
Yeah, because, you know, I used to attend those meetings too. And that's the only reason I threw it out there is wondering if it would make things easier for the, that board to get stuff to the city. And I think somebody like Sarah running it, we're going to get the input, you know, that we're looking for. And, you know, that needs to be heard and will be heard. So I'm just, flame devils, they advocate there.
I think it's, I think it's a good thought. And I think there's people even, I think maybe somebody on the planning board used to go regularly, I'm not for sure. And maybe the conservation board. So I feel like if we can keep the channels open and a good line of communication, obviously with city manager and public works, that's probably more important than the commission in a pragmatic sense. But maybe I'm wrong. Feel free to.
No, I, I agree with that thought. Exactly. I just, I just want ATC to know that I think they're very important and, and something that's very valuable, you know, with the bike audit and stuff like that. You know, I think it's awesome, but they need to be, they have a voice and need to be heard. And I just want to make sure that they are heard. Thank you. At this point, any, anything else? Is there any more public that are waiting or anything like that? Any, commissioners, any thoughts on just opening up a public comment for just overall on the strategic plan? If anybody has anything they want to say at this time regarding one through five? I'd be happy to open it up to the public. You have any takers, Michael or Faith, that might want to weigh in on the tire streets strategic plan? Otherwise, we're looking at a journey. Don't see much more on us.
Can I just recap what you guys have asked of me to make sure that it's actually what you've asked of me?
That'd be great.
All right, so I will add all of the items as draft or things that we already approved in the, in the CARES Act funding discussion that we had earlier. So anything that we approved in that meeting, I will add into the strategic plan. And you can decide if you want to keep it or not when we do our next meeting. Was there any, any other items we talked about in that specific plan that you would also like me to add as draft?
The only other things I had were implementing the growth policy and the downtown master plan. Because those would be new things, new achievements since the last spring when we talked last. And then the board priorities that have been brought before us over and over again, a couple being parks and trails. I mean, we've talked about many things with parks and trails, but I'm thinking like some of the things that they've highlighted as their next priorities. And they've asked for that dialogue and, you know, an interaction with the commission and the city. And then the tree board has brought before us at least twice now over the last couple of years, the Emerald Ash Borer that they're working on a plan. So I think that it's time for it to make the strategic plan. Those are the other things I had in addition to the previous list.
Any specific ones for parks and trails that you can think of?
You know, I think active transportation, like they've talked about this. This is again, that it was kind of a topic you and Sarah were talking about, like this trail connectivity in the context of active transportation. And then that funding that we already talked about being designated towards parks and trails. So I feel like that's kind of a big messy snowball right now to figure out. But all things that we've agreed upon that be tracked somewhere. So it's really about the funding, the trail connectivity and active transportation. And then my hope is that if I'm getting it wrong, the Parks and Trails Committee will correct me.
Are you looking for something in addition to 5.5.1?
Yes, that, what we identified in the, when we discussed CARES Act funding.
Oh, the money we've already made available to them?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just kind of hopping on here in the middle. But this is Marshall on the tree board. And if it's an appropriate time to make this comment, I'd just like to kind of echo what I think Sarah Stan said recently related to this point 552 in the plan. And, and then what Commissioner Newt just said about Ash Borer. I think that maybe trying to piece out the trees piece from this general big category of parks and trails might make sense. You know, it would give us more of a scaffolding for building on that with the Emerald Ash Borer plan and addressing that separately. And, you know, I think would help to give appropriate emphasis to these assets in the community of, you know, parks and trails and trees that have some overlap in some cases, but I think are kind of deserving of having their own kind of points in the plan to be able to prioritize. I think that's all I got.
Thank you. I can't remember which commission meeting that we had that we addressed the Emerald Ash Borer and moving forward with mitigation. Michael, can you refresh my memory? Was it a matter of funding, trying to figure out how to fund the mitigation?
That's part of it. I think part of it's also what strategy we want to take, whether that's replacing trees early or if that's the injecting the trees with the, I forget what the name of that is, but that actually prevents it. I think there was a few strategies that could be adopted and moved towards. Funding is obviously a big part of it and however we're going to fund it. But I think before we tackle the funding piece, we probably need to actually determine what strategy we're going to use moving forward.
Yeah, that's, yeah. That's what I couldn't remember exactly where we left that at. And because it's something that's going to come due pretty darn quick. That needs to be taken care of.
Yeah.
That's why, you know, I don't know if it needs to be in the strategic plan. Because like Mike said, this is something that's short-term. That needs to be done now. And we need to stay on top of it. So whether it makes it into a strategic plan, I, I'm more inclined to make this an action item for the commissioners to stay on top of this. With the advice of obviously the tree board and you guys and the information that, that you've been obtaining and stuff. You know, as far as cost, the cost that we were looking at before, to me did not seem insurmountable, something that we could find a way to fund, so.
Vice Chair. Can I? I would like to believe that it's short-term, but I think from what I understand, it's not going to be a short-term. I think that this will probably be something that it's dealt with in phases until we're talking about widespread tree replacement, which is going to be pretty long-term. And that's just based on my limited understanding as a biologist, not an arborist. I think it might be longer term in many phases to be able to do something sustainable. I think there's going to be pesticides or, you know, it's just like one part of it, I think tree injections. But the big plan is going to be, I think, very long-term, which is why I'd like to see it. Because part of why I'd like to see some things in the strategic plan, even though they might seem small, is it's a way for it to not fall through the cracks. And that's one thing, and then I think a few commissioners have identified as been a concern. And so I think. been a concern. And so I think if it's on the strategic plan, then we're getting regular updates. It's just my thought. So I would like to see some of these things that seem small actually just stay on. And if it's an easy thing to knock out and it's done, then
Yeah. I'm with you on that. That's yeah, we're looking for direction, where to go with it. But yeah, you know, diversifying our inventory and stuff like that, but take care of the need that you need. That is coming with Emerald Ash Board and dealing with that. So okay, I don't know if that makes any sense to you or not, Michael. It's moving forward. As far as, you know, getting that identifying another section regarding the health of our urban forest. In section five.
It's probably more an action than a strategy. So I'll probably just stick it under the one that already exists. I think that makes sense. But I'll take a shot putting all this up. And what I'll do is I'll roll it into a draft. I'll send it back out to the commission and then you guys can decide if you want to do another work session. Or if you're, if it's close enough that you'd like to bring it up for a vote. So I think some time to work through that and decide how it looks.
I like that. Thanks, Michael. I know I'm running this kind of loose, but
There's
actions.
Yeah, there's one thing I would actually update on here. I know that the gateway option tax failed the last legislative cycle, but Michael's probably to the point where if we're going to have him work on that, probably would, if we want him to work this next upcoming legislative cycle or any other any other things that would rise to the state level, we might need to give him a heads up. So he has time to start thinking about his strategy for that. Or anything that he's identified that would be useful to the city. That's just a thought because I saw it pop out and read that it failed. I think we should update it and make another go of it. If it looks like there's
What's, what section was that again? I can't remember.
It's 2.5. It's on page seven.
Oh, right. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I was looking at that earlier. Yeah. We just need to find a local legislator to bring it forward again. So something that I agree that we should keep working on every every two years that they're in session. So that one, Mike? Want to go through that again?
Sarah has her hands up. Sarah, would you want to talk again?
Yes, please. I wanted to know if I potentially could bring clarity to the idea that we're talking about bringing parks, trails and trees into their own category. And I think I agree with you, Michael, that they all do kind of fit in one category when we talk about maintenance. However, then, you know, if I reflect on what Melissa was saying about one of the priorities, we're talking about trail connectivity. And is that an action item or is that strategic? And I think within the Parks and Trails Committee, we're dealing with that, you know, how, how do we go about that? So I do find that that's a very strategic project because of a lack of funding and where do we start to connect and what is the bigger picture? And so one of the things that we're working on in the committee is now that we have a big vision, how do we get and facilitate public input to now make this more of a trails plan in stone? One of the ideas at the city level that we are going to ask is, you know, how do you first create an identity around our trail network system? Because now they're kind of peep wheel and they're all over the place. So an idea to be strategic, quite low budget would be, you know, how do you, how do you interact with what we have? And it was creating that overall identity and of our trail system, not of the Parks and Trails Committee itself, but of the network and the park network. So I don't know if that would be just a justification to isolate that out and, and how do we work towards figuring out how we, how we create that network? And what that looks like? That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Go ahead, Mike. Any thoughts on that?
Um, I think it probably still falls under 5.5 as a strategy, but it can certainly be its own action under that strategy. Which I think is probably appropriate because it's more of a specific action than an overall
Right.
strategy. And so we, I could put that in there as a as a draft, how you look at it, it could just, and it could be simply as, you know, increase trail connectivity or you know, have the maximum amount of trail connectivity possible or, or something on that line as a action. And that's still vague enough that it's not a specific project. But it does say that overall, we're looking to connect our trails as well as we can.
Something that stands out would be, yeah, good. Something that we have to look at every time we open the book. Yeah, I agree. Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Sarah. Any other thoughts out there roaming around?
Kind of a general question here, if I can jump in.
Yeah.
As a new board member, I think I'm trying to figure out, you know, how these ideas that we develop on the boards get implemented and, you know, how the strategic plan fits into that. So I don't think I need an answer on that right now, but I guess, you know, I'm just interested in going forward and any information from the commission or from Michael or from whoever about, you know, in this instance, say of the Emerald Ash Board plan that we'll present to the commission. You know, how that actually gets implemented and gets some budget money and the role that the strategic plan plays in that. And I think that may apply to kind of other priorities that we have. And I think, yeah, certainly other things other boards have. And, you know, I've been talking to the other boards a little bit about this and just learning if any information you have would be, be really welcome.
Quentin.
You want to answer that, Mel?
Yeah. Marshall, I'll be, Commissioner Friedman. I'll be joining you when your next meetings and I understand what you're saying. With all this COVID going around, it's been kind of scarce, but I think I'm ready to get back and been on the board for a long time. So I'm looking forward to working with you. And as soon as we have the next meeting, we'll chat and I'll give you a call before that.
Great. Thank you.
Can I respond also? So Marshall, I think you're doing like everything right. I think coming to the commission meetings and sharing what you're working on. And then, you know, I think you've communicated with city staff also, which is great when you have something to offer them. Generally, the way I've seen it work is when a board has a recommendation, they come to the commission and they they work with Michael to get it on an agenda. The city manager makes the agendas. That's part of his job. He makes the agendas for our meetings. Where you can get a commissioner, ask a commissioner to make the motion. So that would probably be Mel since he comes to your meetings. And then somebody just needs to second it, another commissioner. That's another way to get something on an agenda. Usually for the big stuff, the commission has to vote on it before the city staff start working on it. There would be exceptions to that. Michael can elaborate on what those would be. But generally, the city manager takes direction from the commission and the city staff take direction from Michael as the city manager. It was sort of a long process, but that's generally the way it goes. And there are some exceptions and I'll let Michael elaborate on what those would look like.
So I think that's a pretty good overview of how it works. Obviously, you're already moving forward some ordinances. So I think it's different depending on the type of project you're working on. If it's policy and ordinance, it's a little easier because there's not a funding stream that has to come with it. And so we can make rules, you know, ordinances if needed, policies if not. And that's really just working with whatever particular staff, it's going to affect their area. So for the tree board, that's more, most likely going to be public works. But it might be planning, depending if it's an issue that might fall into zoning or might fall into house setbacks or some other items. So those would be the main issues that you would work with staff on. And then we can bring those in front of the commission for changes to policy or changes to ordinances. So those are easier. If it's a larger project that comes with funding, usually that's going to take figuring out what that level of funding is before we start the process of bringing it in front of the commission. So before we, we bring it to the commission and say, hey, we would like to inject every, you know, ash tree in the city, we would have to know what that would cost. And so we, you'd work with staff to figure out the cost estimate. And then you could bring that in front of the, the commission and we, we'd you know, talk to them about where we could find money for that, whether that is funding in the budget that already exists, if that's budgeting it for the next year. If that's budgeting it for several years so that we save money over two or three years and then had the, the funds to do it at that point. If it's something that we can do incrementally, or if it's something that we need to do all at once, we'd work through all the different funding mechanisms, grants that were available for those particular items, if there were any grants available for those particular items. And then we would present it to the commission as, hey, here's what we can do. Here's how we think we should fund it. And then they can look at it and make the decision on what they think. And then if it needs to go on a future budget year, then that would go into the budget process. It's going to go into the budget meetings and the commission would approve that overall budget. And then once it's budgeted, it's, it's good. So it's a long process and it's more painful than anybody would like it to be, but that's government. So, but really, if you have questions, you know, stop by, come in, sit down, give me a call, whatever. And we can talk through the specifics of it. But everything you're doing so far, I think is, is right on. It just isn't probably as quick as you would like it to be.
I think, Marshall, I just want to say like a really critical part coming up probably for you and what you're working on is going to be this plan. And then the process of getting that before city staff, like it'll have to come through the commission and Michael before it goes to city staff most likely. Because boards don't dictate directly what the staff do. It's an indirect process like we named. And then once the city staff are directed via the city manager to work on it, that's when it's going to get real quickly in terms of like, how can this be implemented or not implemented? What is it like? Do we need ordinances updated? Do we need a pile of money? I think that's like, so the next step is going to be like the really critical line and see what the city staff have to say after they get the initial plan. Because they'll probably have a response to it in terms of like, how they might change it or what's possible or what's not possible based on their limitations.
Thanks, Melissa. Thank you, Michael. Any other thoughts on the overall strategic plan at this time? From anybody? Hi, Iris. Any other thoughts, anybody out there?
Quentin, I have a question regarding the forgiveness for the railroad crossing. Is that a totally dead issue or is that still possible? Thank you.
So that still stands with the State Department of Transportation right now. We sent the request up through them. They're wording the request to send up to the the federal department of transportation. So it's not dead yet. It's not dead yet. It's, it's okay. It should be able to move forward. But it's, again, if you think the city process is slow, the federal process is much slower. And so it's, it's moving up the chain. It just isn't moving very fast.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was asked that question the other day. Exactly. Specifically to Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Any other comments? On the overall, anything on the strategic plan? Otherwise, that will entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. All in favor? The session of the city commission strategic plan is adjourned at 6:06 PM. Thanks, everybody for their input. Appreciate it.
Thank you.